City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Protim Sarno.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on closed session items only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you'll have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we don't have any speakers today.
I will now close public comments. Closed session items five and, excuse me, four and five. I would like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session items. Ivy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Number four is conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957.6, agency designated representative interim city manager, employee organizations, Santa Fe Springs city employees association, Santa Fe Springs firefighters association, and Santa Fe Springs executive management and confidential employees association. Item five is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, government code section 54956.9D1. The name of the case is Arcadia et al. versus SoCal Edison Court, Santa Barbara Superior Court, case number 20CV02026.
Thank you, Ivy. We will now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the city attorney as he adjourns the meeting. Thank you.
Ready? I would like to reconvene the meeting. City attorneys, there are closed session item to report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council members of the audience. We did have a closed session at 5:00 PM. Direction was given to staff and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you so much. We are now... Like to adjourn this meeting. We'll be in recess for seven minutes. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rounds.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora. Mayor Protem Sarno. Mayor Martin.
Here.
And I would like to add that members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Janet. The City of San Feis brings the allow for an invocation to be offered at its city council meetings, and it's open to any faith or religion on a voluntary basis. Invocational speakers shall be limited to one minute. Please contact the City Clerk's office if you'd like to offer an invocation. Tonight, I would like to call upon Mayor Protem Sarno to lead us in today's invocation.
Please rise. By your heads. We direct our thoughts to you, Almighty God, and ask your blessing on everyone present. Please accept our gratitude for your goodness and generosity. Give us wisdom, courage, and foresight to accomplish the work before us. Amen.
At this time, I would like to call upon Benjamin Fernandez, a third grader student from St. Pius, the 10th school, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and in every and just as for all.
There, Benjamin. Question. What's your favorite subject at school?
Math.
Math? What is your worst subject?
Reading.
Reading? Oh, my goodness. Now, this is a real hard question. Can we take a picture with you with your mom and dad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Come on up. Now, the new thing that we've been doing, I've been recognizing representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, do I see Mark Gutierrez anywhere? Oh, I didn't see you. So, Mark Gutierrez is owner and broker of Gilmar Automotive Group. Gilmar Automotive Group was formed by Mark Gutierrez in 2014. Mark wanted the company to be family-inspired and operated, so he named it after his parents, Gilbert and Marguerite Gutierrez. With the help of his wife, Rachel, and children, Christopher Gutierrez and Christian Gutierrez, the company holds true, upholding honest family values. Mark began in the automobile business with no experience in 2003 selling cars. After his first year, he was recognized as the top performer in the Western region for his brand. He progressed into the internet sales position, internet sale manager, fleet manager, sales manager, and then general sales manager. Mark upholds this philosophy with Gilmar Automotive Group, giving the client complete, honest, and fair treatment. His years of experience in the business have given him the knowledge to know exactly where the dealer profit margins are, accounting the dealer incentives from the factory, customer incentives, rebates, interest rates, and money factors. Long story short, if you guys need a car, you go see Mark. He gives you the best deals, everything, count-worthy thing better here. Our second one is Daniel O'Meara. What can I say more? He is our Starbucks guy. One thing about Daniel, a lot of people don't really realize outside the city, his Starbucks says so much for our community. Anytime we need anything, he's the first one to volunteer, to donate, and we don't see that too much, especially out of big corporations. So, please, guys, if you guys ever have a Starbucks to go to, make sure you guys are always at Daniel's Starbucks. That is the best. So, thank you so much for being here and being part of the chamber. Thank you. If anyone is interested in making a public comment on agenda items, please fill out a public comment card located in the back of the council chamber and hand it to the City Clerk. For those of you who join us by Zoom and you're interested in speaking on an agenda item, please raise your hand when the item is called. The City Clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application or submitted a card before the item is voted on. Any public comment not related to an agenda item will be heard under the item 15 on the agenda. Public Finance Authority, item number six, Public Finance Authority Agenda. We have two consents. Is there a motion for the approval of Item 6A and 6B?
I'll move.
Motion by Rodriguez, second by Zamora. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, Water Utility Authority Agenda. We have three consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of Items 7A through 7C?
I'll move. Second.
Moved by Rounds, second by Sarno. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number eight, Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of Item 8?
I'll move.
A second.
Motion by Zamora, second by Sarno. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number nine, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of Item 9?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Rodriguez, second by Rounds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. City Council. Item number 10, City Council Agenda. We have seven consent items, which is A through G. Is there a motion for the approval of City Council Consent Agenda?
I'll move A through G. A second.
Motion by Sarno and second by Rounds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 11, Resolution Number 9856, approving, authorizing, and directing the execution of the Joint Exercise of Power Agreement relating to the membership in the Gateway Cities Affordable Housing Trust. I would like to call upon Director of Planning Wayne Morrell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. We do have this item before you. I have Mr. Grant Penninger in the audience if you desire a presentation. Is there a desire for Council for a presentation? Or is it summary enough based on the staff report?
Summary is perfect enough.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody have any discussions for this item right now before we get started on it? Do we have a... Let me see. Do you have a motion for the approval of Item Number 11?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Rounds, second by Zamora. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 12, Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023, Midyear Budget Review and Modifications. I would like to call on Director of Finance Travis Hickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council, members of the public. We have a brief presentation on the mid-year budget adjustment items. Okay, so in our fiscal year 2223 budget that you approved last June, we had an initial projected surplus of about $1.5 million. You know, as usual, we budget conservatively on our revenues. Some of our costs increased Some of our cost increases we saw were increases for our employees based on our labor agreements, increases in our pension and healthcare costs, and increase in the minimum wage. We also set aside funding for our capital improvement plan. And now we're here tonight to present some review and recommended adjustments for our midyear review. As has been our experience really through the pandemic, we've been fortunate with our sales tax. It has been good to our business community. Both our sales tax and our Measure Y, which is a different version of sales tax, have continued to exceed our expectations and we're still seeing that in this fiscal year. We did also see an increase in costs in our maintenance and operations, primarily driven by increases in inflation. But those cost increases are more than offset by our revenue expectations. So our projected surplus has gone from $1.5 million to $3.5 million. Next slide. So this is a look at where we're at. The left column there is our original budget. That bottom line you see is our $1.5 million initial surplus projection. The proposed midyear, we're at $3.5 million. We're projecting about a $3 million increase in our revenues, about a $1 million increase in our expenditures for a net increase there of $2 million. Go to the next slide, we'll look at the revenues. Might be a little bit hard to see from the audience there, but our major adjustments are $2.4 million in additional sales tax revenue projection, additional $560,000 in our Measure Y projection, a modest increase in our property transfer tax. We're seeing an increase of $39,000 there. So that altogether is a $3 million increase in our general fund revenues we're projecting. If we go to the next slide, we have the breakdown, again, a bit small. But for the council, this was in the packets, part of the agenda packet. I wasn't going to cover each of these line by line, but some of our major adjustments here, we had a $225,000 legal settlement that we got direction from the council to enter into during the fiscal year. Part of the consent agenda for tonight was at the bottom left of the screen there, $160,000 for our upgrade to our city hall phone system. On the right side of the screen, we have about $185,000, I'm sorry, $165,000 in supplies and materials for public works throughout our maintenance activities. There's a number of maintenance activities that that $165,000 is coming from. We had an increase of $200,000. We're requesting for the police department overtime as well as $325,000 in overtime for our firefighter personnel. That is being offset by an additional $184,000 that we expect to receive in reimbursements from the state for when our guys are deployed. And so that also, we're expecting an additional $700,000 in planning and inspection fees. We, as I mentioned, we budget conservatively. On the revenue side, we treat our planning fees as kind of an offset to our expenditures. And again, we budget conservatively with that and we're expecting that to come in about $700,000 over budget. So all told, that adds up to about $1 million of additional expenditures that we're forecasting at our midyear review. Next slide. We shift to the water fund. Our water fund, we're on target. We're not recommending any adjustments to our water fund. And so really nothing to show here. And next, just kind of looking forward as we are looking for our fiscal year 2324 budget. You know, we have kind of uncertainties going on in the world between the war between Russia and Ukraine and our own political environment here in the United States. Just, you know, just we keep a constant watch on that. But as I mentioned, we have fared well through the COVID pandemic, but now we're seeing the effects with our rising inflation costs. And so that will certainly be factored into our budgets. And you know, I bring it up every year multiple times, but we do have one of the worst CalPERS unfunded liabilities amongst cities throughout California. And so that continues to be a challenge for us as well as establishing a long-term financing mechanism for replacing cities' infrastructure. So that's items that we're looking at going into the future. You know, next steps in terms of our 2324 budget, we're working on that now. We expect to have that put together in April, meet with the city manager and the departments to go through the departmental budget worksheets and sit down with the council in May to review the budget and then with final adoption to be scheduled for June. So that is a brief overview and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you council have questions?
Travis, I have a couple, well, one question. I know that when it comes to the IT, I'm sorry, that what was it like 316, 319,000 total?
In terms of the adjustments?
Yeah. But I just know that sometimes some of the things that we're using, I talked to our CM Tom Hatch and just we're paying into all this, but we're still using antiquated systems. So I want to know when, and I know Tom's going to go over it with you. So I just wanted to make sure that we do, you know, start using the newer technology and using the systems that we need to do now and just start training whoever needs to be trained on the newer systems instead of just keep paying out what we're paying. So I know Tom will go more in debt with it. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Sure. I mean, we, you know, we do make upgrades and improvements to our system every year, but we welcome the council's input in terms of any kind of specific areas you want us to focus on in the budget. We certainly welcome that input.
Any other questions from council? I'm seeing none. Is there a motion for item number 12?
I'll move.
There's a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 13, Presentation and Consideration of the City Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2022. I would like to call again Director of Finance Travis Hickey.
Well, I guess we went and thank you, Madam Mayor. We were in a little bit reverse order, so that was a look at our current budget. This is really just kind of checking the box that we got last year's audit completed. We were, you know, honestly a bit behind in getting the audit completed, but we were able to sit down with the council audit subcommittee last week with our auditor to check the box on this item. So just have a quick couple of slides on this item. We can go to the next slide. So our independent auditors are the firm of Clifton, Larson and Allen. The audit partner is Nattin Patel. So this was their third year of conducting the city's audit. Mr. Patel is online on Zoom and so can address any questions that the council has. Their audit disclosed what's called an unmodified opinion, which is good. That's the best opinion the city can get. That means that in the auditor's opinion, our financial statements represent fairly the position of the city and with no material departures from, you know, generally accepted accounting principles. So they also issued a report on the city's internal controls and noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And so they conducted their audit in the first phase of their audit in July. The final phase was in October. And we met with two different audit committees. In the interim phase, we met with councilmembers Martin and Mora, or council member at the time, mayor now. And we met last week with Mayor Protem Sarno and Councilmember Rounds. And so, you know, we mentioned always with our audit committee that, you know, they have a direct line of communication with our auditors and can always reach out to them directly with any questions or concerns with the city's audit. So just a quick look at the city's revenue, the big orange slice there, over half of our revenue, sales and use tax, which is our, which we call the Bradley Burn Sales Tax, the orange slice there. Another 21% of our revenue is our Measure Y or transaction and use tax. And so obviously that is a major source of the city's general fund revenue. Other significant sources are the city's UUT and property tax revenue. So again, we fared well through the COVID pandemic, but sales and use tax is very susceptible to changes in the economy. So it's something we definitely keep a close eye on. And so, next slide. So this is a look at our general fund, fund balances. This is a lot going on on this slide, but if we look at that pie chart on the right, we have about $35.4 million of our total of $68.3 million in fund balance. Again, this is for the general fund, fund balance, total of $68.3 million. $35.4 is what we call assigned. And this is assigned for equipment replacement, facility improvements, economic uncertainty, employee benefits, risk management, and our unfunded liability, which is the lion's share of that at over $18 million. We have set aside for that. We have an unassigned fund balance of $28 million. This is the one the council has approved a policy to target 40% and that $28 million represents about 40% of our expenditures. And so a couple of other smaller categories there make up the $68.3 million. So the water fund net position is $21.8 million, which was an increase of $2.4 million from last year. Our unrestricted net assets are $3.1 million and we have about $11.7 million set aside for CIP reserves in the water fund. So we have a couple of new accounting standards to make the council and public aware of. We adopted this year, it's called GASB Statement Number 87. It deals with leases, really just is a fundamental retooling of how we account for leases. We have to report the lease asset. We report lease liabilities and then as we pay those leases or receive those leases, they reduce those balances. So the financial statements look a little bit different because of that standard being implemented. It's kind of cousin standard is the GASB 96, which deals with basically software and IT applications, which will be sort of treated the same way as with leases. So that will be coming up in our next audit. So and with that, take any questions?
Any council have questions tonight? Thank you. Yep, thank you so much. Having no comments can have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a second?
A second.
Motion by Zamora, second by Rodriguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 13, Presentation and Consideration, no, we did that one already. 14, Presentations. Recognition of 2023 Santa Fe Springs Shamrock Fund Walk Event Sponsors. I would like to call upon Management Analyst Ruby Bicon.
And council. Through our Health and Wellness Initiative, the Department of Community Services aims to educate and empower our community to improve and maintain overall health and to advocate for a healthy community culture. The annual Shamrock 5K Fund Run Walk is one of our more popular health and wellness events and took place on Saturday, March 11. The event was a huge success in large part due to the support of community partners. Sponsorships received ensure that we continue to offer low registration fees and provide snacks and drinks to all participants. Tonight, we are honored to be able to recognize our event sponsors. And we'll begin with our gold sponsor. Serve Well Disposal and Recycling. Come down to the floor. Next, we'll recognize our partners for their in-kind donations. Norwalk Lomorado Plumbing. Not sure if they're here. Starbucks. And last but not least, our very own Department of Fire Rescue. Thank you.
Next presentation, Proclamation, proclaiming March 29, 2023 as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. I would like to call upon City Clerk to read the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas a Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 was signed into law designating every March 29 as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. And whereas the Department of Veteran Affairs estimates that today there are more than 7 million US Vietnam veterans living in America and abroad, along with 10 million families of those who served during this timeframe. Now therefore, the City of Santa Fe Springs to hereby proclaim March 29, 2023 as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Thank you.
I'd like to thank every veteran in here for our freedom. At this time, I would like to call upon Vietnam War Veteran Lee Squire to accept this on behalf of the Veterans Administrative Clinic in Santa Fe Springs and also invite any other Vietnam War vets present today to accept this proclamation. Just so, we actually now, because of Lee, we now have a POW flag in our city. We will be having a ceremony raising of the flag. We don't have exactly what date. We think at one of the other council meetings. So be aware, we will be doing that so we can raise a flag up properly with some of our veterans here in the city. So thank you. Public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use a raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on non-agenda items only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we have three speakers today. The first one is Bruce Crow.
Come on up, Bruce.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me as a guest from Downey. I just have a little bit of a report. My main concern is the Central Basin Municipal Water District. The previous general manager, Alex Rojas, was scheduled to have a plea hearing on the 15th of March, but that was postponed because they are moving the trial to another judge and that will be on March 29. They're moving it to a judge who is familiar to complex criminal cases. This has been an ongoing issue and it is complex. Central Basin covers 24 cities. And like I say, from Downey, we don't hear any information about any of this. And some of you may not have even known this as well, but the hearing is being moved to March 29. And it is complex. There are 18 to March twenty ninth, and it is complex. There are eighteen charges against Mr. Alex Rojas. And uh, he will have a plea to make, and we're gonna find out exactly what he's gonna say and what his counsel is gonna say. And we hope, we hope that justice is served, and we get a, a return to normalcy. Especially not just the political situations at home here, but in our state and, and our county and in our cities. Um, right now, it's a little skeptical that we can return to some normalcy. But hopefully, if we're optimistic, people will be held accountable for the actions that they have committed. And in view of normalcy, I'd like to think also that our culture is returning to a sense of normalcy as well, but we have to have people stand up. Especially the normal people. Stand up and stop with all this woke nonsense that goes on in our state especially. And I just have some more news. Um, a second hockey player has refused to wear the L G B T flag. And thank God, we're turning back to some normal behavior, that people can stand up and have the First Amendment and thanks to the friends that fought and died for our First Amendment. Uh, that's what it's about. They fought and died for our First Amendment. And unfortunately, I'll pick a little bone with the veterans. I don't hear much from the veterans standing up for our First Amendment rights lately. And they need to stand up more, especially if they're the ones that are gonna put out all the effort. Cause I remember I had a brother, uh, Vietnam veteran come home and people spit on him, call him baby killers. Showed no respect for him whatsoever. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce.
Madam Mayor, next we have Lee Squire.
First of all, for the audience to understand, when I was going like this to the mayor, we had a U S Army Sergeant Major Vietnam and Desert Storm right in front of me, and he went left. I guess this is grandson or great grandson, what, that was an honor too, to watch his son exercise his freedom of speech before the city council, but that was kind of like the humor I was making. Lee Squire, City of Downey, Vietnamese veteran. Son nephew, World War Two nephew of the Korean War. Subject Vietnam Veterans Day. Vietnamese veterans are those who served in the Vietnam War, but we did not serve in Vietnam. We swore a blood oath that we would defend their honor for those who served in Vietnam. At the time of the Vietnam War, this country was being torn by the Civil Rights Movement on the one hand and the Vietnam War on the other. Those who returned from Vietnam did so without parades or fanfare. Many who were, many who were returned were spit upon and called baby killers. That happened to me when I was in Washington, D C. Those who served in Vietnam, we were not, we were not told the truth about the health effects of Agent Orange. And after three decades later, contaminated water Marine Base Camp Lejeune. I can't even ima- I'm U S Army. I can't even imagine this impact to my Marine Corps brothers and sisters. I want to thank the city council for this proclamation. I will personally deliver it to your V A clinic on behalf of not just the Vietnam veterans, but we also swore a note to defend those who were before us and followed us. I will serve this upon and hand this to that V A clinic tomorrow. Thank you very much, and God bless all of you. Good night.
Madam Mayor, next we have Julia Emerson.
Hi, thank you. I am Julia Emerson. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Santa Fe Springs for the Southern California Gas Company. And I'm glad to be back before you. First, let me say a quick thank you for your Public Works Department, especially at Australia Engineer. Um, we needed an urgent permit to fix a gas line. They were quick, they were efficient, they got everything. Your, your, your folks do a great job and work with us tremendously well, and partially thanks to them, well, thanks to them. Uh, your gas system continues to be safe and reliable in Santa Fe Springs. I'm also here tonight to give you an update. Uh, you may have heard, I think, from some of your residents, the price of natural gas has risen. Many of the gas bills have risen for residents right here in Santa Fe Springs. The gas prices have been historically high in recent months, and I'm happy to report those market prices have begun to drop very dramatically. I'm relieved, and I'm sure your residents are relieved. The market prices have dropped more than eighty percent in the last three months compared to the high in January. Please understand that SoCal Gas, um, we don't set the price for natural gas. We buy it on the market and then we take that gas uh, without, you know, w- w- with uh, the, with the price as it is. We push the price through to your residents, to your small businesses, and that cost of natural gas is billed without a markup. We charge a fee for the transportation, and you see that on the bill. But we don't mark up the natural gas that your residents and your businesses pay here in Santa Fe Springs. Santa Fe Springs, or SoCal Gas therefore, does not profit when the commodity price of natural gas rises. But there are small bits of good news. As I said, the prices are uh, going down. Also, the Public Utilities Commission voted to accelerate a climate credit that was going to appear on everybody's bill anyway, but they made it appear sooner. So there should be a credit of about fifty dollars on every residential bill in Santa Fe Springs in either their February or their March bill. If you have a level pay plan, uh, the, the amount owed drops by fifty percent, although the level pay amount continues. Santa Fe, or uh, SoCal Gas also delayed collection activities on residential accounts. We will not disconnect overdue residential customers for the time being, and we've temporarily paused uh, non-residential collection activities for businesses, uh, small businesses in the field as of February first. We continue to inform. We hope you will go to SoCalGas.com, look for more information. I'm always happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers for today.
Thank you so much. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. City Manager Exec, and Executive Team Report. So I'd like to call upon interim City Manager Tom Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Member, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, and good evening to our staff and community. I do have a, a couple items to report uh, today. The first one is uh, uh, about a year ago, uh, city staff, uh, per the council's direction, applied for a, a grant through Congressman Linda Sanchez's office. Just last week, um, we were able to collect the big check. Um, we had applied for a grant towards water well number twelve in the City of Santa Fe Springs. Uh, this, uh, this check that we received in terms of a grant from the federal government and through uh, Linda Sanchez's office was in the amount of two point two million dollars, and that'll go towards the total five million dollar cost of that uh, project to get that uh, well up and working. And so uh, the council uh, was there to celebrate that and really appreciates uh, uh, Congressman Sanchez for that. Um, also, as part of that process, uh, Linda Sanchez's, Sanchez's office notified us that they're looking for uh, the next round of grants that we uh, potentially would be interested in. Uh, we quickly looked at a variety of different projects uh, that met the criteria. So I think in, in a lot of the council's minds and the community's minds, uh, we all hear quite a bit about the Aquatic Center and how important uh, that project is, and we're working on that project with the help of the community to help design that. And but we're all looking for funding as well. It's an expensive project. It's a great investment uh, by the mayor and city council and the community, and it'll last for many decades. But that's a very expensive project. Lo and behold, this year, that project did not meet the criteria established by the Congresswoman uh, for grants. So we, we instead uh, looked at all the projects we had in the community that would best fit uh, the criteria that they were looking for, and that project that we came up with was called the Slosson Avenue Street Improvement Project. And then we've now um, submitted that grant uh, to Congressman Sanchez, Congresswoman Sanchez's office. Uh, their staff reviewed that grant, and just today, we were notified uh, some good news that the project met the criteria, and it's moving on in the next phase of that review. And so that is going through the process, but it met the first step of that criteria. Hopefully somewhere in the future, we'll hear some good news on that as well, but uh, that, that prog- process uh, is underway. Next slide for me. Uh, just last uh, Friday, um, uh, the mayor and I attended uh, Assembly Member Blanca Pacheco's Mayor and City Managers Roundtable. We were invited along with, I think, a total of nine different cities that uh, Assembly Member Pacheco um, provides uh, representation to, and those cities gathered uh, in um, in, in Downey. And we got together on Saint Patrick's Day to discuss a variety of different um, different uh, uh, interests that we all had. And in particular, Assembly Member Pacheco was looking for our city's interest and all the city's interest in three different areas, in the area of housing, in the area of transportation, and the area of public safety. And so next slide. So we tried to provide those, uh, and I'll rattle through these pretty quickly, cause this did take a little while to present all this information. But in short, we're just focused on those three areas. The first one is housing. And uh, I'm not sure if the community is aware, but uh, the city uh, has to follow uh, uh, criteria from the state in terms of our housing element and our, what we call our arena numbers, our regional needs, uh, regional housing needs assessment, and the City of Santa Fe Springs over the next eight years is responsible for trying to meet a goal of creating nine hundred and fifty-two new housing units in various income uh, cri- cri- categories. And so that's a, it's a challenge. Uh, that's a lot of housing units for our city, and we're while that's a big number for Santa Fe Springs, a lot of other cities have really large numbers, cause housing is a big concern statewide, uh, but it's, it's um, it's a difficult task. And so the challenge that uh, the mayor and I, along with the others, other mayors and other city managers were trying to convey to the assembly member is that um, the state needs to be understanding of the variety of different issues and constraints and challenges that we have in each city as it relates to these goals or mandates down from the state. And so in Santa Fe Springs, we have uh, a lot of industrial property and a lot of oil, old oil fields. Those create some challenges. Let's see, uh, uh, the, the cleanup of those brownfield sites takes funding. So uh, while we have expensive land in California in general, when you have a brownfield site, it's even more expensive to help uh, clean up and prep it, prep it for the next housing phase. Uh, next slide. In addition, the state has created uh, these mandates that uh, put uh, force uh, cities to look at various projects and really just approve them outright. And so we have one of those projects in town that we didn't get to look as closely at and analyze traffic impacts, noise impacts and service impacts. And so we were letting the assembly member know that while um, the state is a, a leader in terms of uh, government for all of us, it's the local city that really should set the tone about what's best for Santa Fe Springs. This council and this community knows uh, more about what's best for Santa Fe Springs than I'd say humbly than the assembly member or any other member of uh, the ca- you know, the governor's cabinet or uh, the, the California um, infrastructure and bureaucracy. And so we were conveying, uh, be careful when uh, there's rules that come down from the state and, and how they impact our local community. Next slide. And against, uh, again, uh, the push from Sacramento is more towards higher density residential and less uh, single-family residential, and uh, that creates challenges. If we, uh, while that's efficient in terms of providing uh, land use, um, we have to provide police, fire, sewer, water services to those new larger units that come into town. And we have, as you saw from our mid-year budget report, we have very low property taxes. And so if we build a large uh, housing unit, we have to provide services to those residents. And uh, that's, that impacts our long-term financial issues as well. And so we conveyed that concern as well to the assembly member. Next slide. Terms of the transportation area, again, uh, what we did is we gathered this information from a variety of different directors, and this one came out of our Public Works Department. In short, uh, the metro line is looking to create an extension uh, off of uh, Washington, uh, the Washington Corridor. Uh, but there is a requirement for a three percent contribution from this city to, towards that, towards that project. And as, as residents would know, Washington Corridor is really on the, the northern part of the community. It doesn't go right through the center of the community. And so that corridor helps a variety of different uh, uh, other cities in that area and unincorporated in areas in that area. And so that contribution is a big uh, ticket and a big cost for us over the long period of time. And uh, we made some points to the assembly member that uh, while uh, it's, we're working with the uh, metro on that, we want to continue working with them. But we would need their help to analyze the, these impacts. It doesn't make a lot of sense to us to, that we create and hire more legal team and more staff to analyze those things. Let's work together with Metro and al- analyze those as a team, look to put in those services and those improvements, but find a way to fund those in a equitable, equitable and fair way. Next slide. Terms of the I-five construction, this has been going on uh, for many years. We're in phase three. It's a, it's winding down. Uh, and, and we've been a supporter of that project and a partner on that project. It did have some impacts to Santa Fe Springs in terms of our, our roads and infrastructure in, around that area. And we wanted to make sure that the assembly member was a advocate for us in terms of when that project is moving towards completion, that the money doesn't mysteriously move away and uh, find a different home, that it stays locally, and that we use that to improve our robes and, and raise those standards. Next slide. And again, just the point, uh, in terms of our environmental quality uh, impacts when um, we reduce the uh, studies that were required about the impacts from new development, that, that has not only short-term but long-term impacts on our city, and uh, we made that point to the assembly member. Next slide. Terms of transportation, there's a variety of different needs that we have uh, for uh, improvements. And we made that point that continue, the assembly member should continue to support us in those grant efforts. Next slide. Final slide, I promise. Final slide is related to public safety, priority issues, and the, the first one in almost every city uh, mentioned uh, these similar impacts. The first one for the, we mentioned was the impact of homelessness. And uh, officers responded to sixteen hundred and fourteen calls, homeless-related calls and impacts in um, this year, which was a forty-five percent increase in calls from calendar year twenty twenty-one. Property crime impacts, uh, thefts from vehicles are on the rise, impacting the quality of life of residents and business owners. And finally, decriminalization continues to create some challenges for law enforcement. And uh, as we know, people uh, that need drug treatment and drug help, we need some additional diversion programs to ensure they get the treatment uh, that they need. That was a longer report for me tonight. Thank you for your patience. And these were important items that we were expressing to, to that assembly member. And uh, I think the, the mayor and I did a pretty good job in representing uh, the city in those efforts. And so with that, we will turn it over to Director of Community Service, Marti Sela Valeris.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, audience. I have a couple of um, items to share with you this evening. So on Saturday, March the eleventh, the city hosted its annual Five K Fun Run and Toddler Run. We had approximately twenty kids that participated in the toddler run. The rainy conditions tested the community's resilience. Yet we had six hundred and eighty-nine that registered for the Five K and five hundred thirty-three that crossed the finish line. In two, in twenty twenty-one, there were five hundred and fifteen registered and four ninety-nine that crossed the finish line, which was an increase of approximately twenty-five percent this year. Saul Reyna, a fifteen-year-old from Santa Fe Springs, won the Five K with an overall time of eighteen minutes and twenty-three seconds, while Paisley Perry, a ten-year-old from Santa Fe Springs and Councilmember Rounds's granddaughter, was first in the overall female division with a time of twenty-four minutes and one second. Uh, we want to congratulate those winners for their remarkable efforts. We also want to thank our city council members who welcomed the crowd and walked the Five K in the rainy conditions. I miss walking with our council members this year to make sure that they didn't take any shortcuts. Finally, I want to commend um, all of the staff that were involved with this Five K and making it a great success. Planning for this event, uh, of this magnitude doesn't happen overnight. And staff in several departments have been meeting since June of last year to plan for the event. I want to commend all of the staff who had a hand uh, on this in police services, with your P D, Public Works, the City Managers Office and Community Services Staff for their collaborative efforts and produ- for their collaborative efforts and producing a great event for Santa Fe Springs. Here's a recap video of the event.
I just like being, you know, physically fit and I like, you know, just being competitive. And, you know, this atmosphere is a lot of fun.
You know, first of all, this is my first time. Second, because it's fun and I decided to register and it was fun. Thank you so much. It's well, it's well organized. And thank you so much for inviting all the cities to come and run this five K show. It's great. We invite you to come for the next one.
Thanks, Santa Fe Springs.
Thank you, Santa Fe Springs.
So please save the date. Plans are already underway for next year's five K, and it'll be held on Saturday, March ninth, 2024. So moving on to the next item. So you may recall seeing this item on our city manager's report a few weeks ago. So beginning on May first of this year, Town Center Hall will be changing its hours of operation and closing ninety minutes earlier Monday through Thursday. So the current hours and new hours are on your screen. The new hours align with the amount of hours that other city facilities are open. And now that Parks and Rec takes online registration and the online presence has increased significantly, reservation applications and registrations are accessible twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week from the comfort of one's home. So the facility will remain open for regular scheduled programs such as contract classes like yoga or business meetings at no additional cost to reservation holders. The public will begin to see informational notices beginning next week. Moving on to the Art Fest. So plans are underway for the 2023 Art Fest. This year, the event's going to be held on Friday, April the twenty-eighth, from three to eleven, with a preview and showcase night being held on Thursday, April the twenty-seventh, from five to nine at the Clark Estate. The preview and art show provides business residents and interested community members an exclusive opportunity to personally meet the featured and guest artists, shop the variety of artisan vendors, and enjoy musical entertainment by the Latin Misfits. On Friday, the Art Fest event will feature three stages with musical and dance entertainment, food trucks, artisan vendors, live installation art, and film screenings. Something new this year, we will be highlighting the winners of the Chuck It Out event at the Art Fest. Headlining musical entertainment includes Kita Penas, Corazon de Maná, Soul 360, No Duh, Pulp Fiction, and Upstream Music. Next slide. The sock hop dance for older adults is almost sold out. The dance is going to take place this Friday, March the twenty-fourth, from nine to twelve at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. The tickets are ten dollars and lunches included. Due to the Lent season, staff has requested to offer a meatless entree. So if the dance sells out, we'll establish a waiting list for more information called the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. Next slide. So this week, March the twentieth through March the twenty-fourth, Community Services is holding a children's clothing drive. Residents can donate gently-used school-age clothing and teens' clothing to support the Gus Velasco Center Community Closet. So there are bins available for donations at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center and at City Hall. And then lastly, last night, over at our library, we had over a hundred kids and adults who viewed the nightlight right inside the library at the Planetarium Experience. Participants entered a large inflated dome and then enjoyed an immersive journey through space. This program is part of the NASA at our library series, which is funded by a twenty thousand dollar grant from the state library. The next show is going to be Roberts and Rockets, and that'll be on April the nineteenth at six thirty PM. And so due to the popular demand, the library is going to be adding a fourth program regarding the sun, and there's details to follow. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Travis Hickey, our Director of Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening again. Just two quick items to report. Last week, Debbie Ford and Cindy Rosales from our Human Resources Department attended the Lieber Cassidy Whitmore Public Sector Employment Law Annual Conference down in San Diego. It covers a variety of topics, over six hundred participants were there from cities all throughout the state. The topics included workplace investigations, discipline in hearings, wage and hour provisions, CalPERS retirees, hybrid workplaces, so kind of the gamut of a public sector employment law. So it was a valuable conference for them. Next slide. And we wanted to recognize Paul Martinez, our Director of Purchasing Services on his forty years of service to the city. He celebrated that last Tuesday. So we had a couple of celebrations for him and, and just wanted to recognize him here and share some of these fun photos of his years here at the city. And so we've had Paul for forty years and, and hopefully a few more. But we love Paul and he does a great job for the city. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Fire Chief, Chief Chad Van Meteren.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I have two items for you this evening. If I get the first slide, please. If you remember last week, Wednesday, we sent our OES rig staff with four personnel from Santa Fe Springs Fire up to Tulare County to assist with the flooding that they were having up in that area. Fortunately, the flooding hasn't been as bad as expected. If I get the next slide. But crews have been working hard. They've been going door-to-door, warning people of the potential flooding from this current storm that we're having right now, filling sandbags for people. And also the picture on the right there, that is a hospital where they passed some flooding in the basement that has sensitive electronics equipment down in the basement. So they were working on getting that shored up to prevent any flooding from the, from the rains today. And next slide, please. Also, last week, Wednesday, we sent our Urban Search and Rescue Team. Originally, they were deployed up to the Bishop area. Ultimately, they were sent up to the Mammoth area where they worked on snow removal and shoring up buildings that collapsed by over fifty-eight feet of snow that they've received up there so far this year. If I get the next slide, please. You can see some of the shoring operations that they were doing on the slide on the left there. They build these shores to temporarily hold up the structures from the way to the snow. They're currently getting snow up there right now, and they're hoping that they don't have more of these building collapses. If you see that slide there on the right, they actually had to have chains put on the rigs. We've never had that done before. So this is new to us, but the guys are safe and doing well. If I get the next slide, please. One more slide on the, on the Urban Search and Rescue. If you see the slide in the middle there, that gentleman is Wayne Toussaint. He is a retired firefighter from Santa Fe Springs, retired over twenty years ago with thirty years of service to the city. So he happens to live up in the Mammoth area and went out to say hi to the guys. You'll notice he's in short-sleeve shirt, and everybody else is freezing to death. So he's obviously become accustomed to that weather. So if I get the next slide, please. If you remember about a year ago, we, we brought two new employees to you, one of them being Jason Amaya. Jason Amaya completed his probation this, this last week. He completed over seven hundred and fifty hours of training, was successful in four different exams during that year process. So last week, Tuesday, we had a pending for Jason. He was able to bring his family in, see them down in the bottom left corner there. You might recognize the name, his brother, Justin Amaya, also works for us. His dad, and down in the lower left, is a fire captain in the city of Monobello. So it comes from a tradition by our family. Next slide, please. Also, completing probation is Andrew Tong, Andrew Kong, sorry. Andrew also completed seven hundred and fifty hours. He was also able to bring his family in. So last week, Saturday, we did the badge pending for him. If you see down in the bottom left corner there, his young daughter was born two days after he got hired here in the city. So she should hopefully remember his probation area year. As you can see, he has quite a large family. He brought them in on the lower right down there for, for his pending, which is something to be proud of. I get the next slide, please. Andrew's brother happens to be a police officer for the city of Long Beach. And if you look at that slide on the right, the way he's admiring that badge, I'm pretty sure he's going to apply with us when we have our next round of hiring. So anyway, that's all I have this evening. Thank you. End of my report.
Thank you. Next up is our Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tomorrow and Thursday, the Family Youth Intervention Program will continue this year's diversity program with assemblies at Santa Fe High and Lake Center Middle Schools with one of North America's top youth speakers, Keith Hawkins. Keith is an international speaker that speaks and conducts programs to over four hundred thousand students, parents, educators, leaders, and businesses annually. Keith is a keynote speaker, a workshop presenter, a facilitator of activities, and a program director. The Give What You Need presentation lays the foundation for developing leadership skills that will move students toward a brighter and better tomorrow. Keith Hawkins will motivate the students to make positive changes in their lives, school, and ultimately the world. The Family and Youth Intervention Program and its diversity component are designed to help schools, parents, students, and community members create safer and more productive places to learn and live. The goal is to motivate and equip all to show compassion and be part of positive change to ourselves, our schools, and our community. Next slide, please. This Thursday, members of the Woodyard Police Department's dispatch team, along with public safety officer staff, will be providing calls for service, best practices, training to the Parks and Recreation Services Division. We collaborate and work with Gus and his staff daily. We also periodically provide different types of training to his staff. In this case, it's related to who to call, when to call, and how to describe the situation that staff may be confronting. It's also an opportunity to meet staff and ask questions. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Last report is from our Interim Director of Public Works, Yvette Kirin. Oh, Wayne. Wade, I'm sorry. Next up is our Director of Planning. Please join me in welcoming Wayne Morrell.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, this isn't my slide. Oh, it is. Okay, hold on. So I would like to bring Vince Velasco up. When he's not running in five K as a leprechaun, his official title is Associate Planner with the City of Santa Fe Springs. Vince, thank you.
Mayor. I'd like to continue some of that feel-good energy with this Cinderella story on one of our industrial properties. The subject site is one three nine hundred Carmody Road. A little bit of background, it used to be a chemical storage facility. And so over the years, a lot of those harsh chemicals created contaminations in the soil. In two thousand and nineteen, the city's planning commission approved a new development for a warehouse facility here. I know it was already spoiled, but ta-da, that's what it looks like today. And so with the city's guidance through the permitting process and also through the water board, the regional water board oversight, the developer helped basically clean up the contamination on this site. It's an ongoing effort. But to top that off, we were notified at the beginning of this month that the Los Angeles Business Journal, which serves the Los Angeles community and has served the Los Angeles business community for over forty years, has recognized this building, this project, at their Commercial Real Estate Awards event on March first. So not only is this a highlight and accomplishment for the design team, the development team, but this is a great full-circle story for the city as well. This is a site that had a lot of contamination, and it was not only cleaned up, but we helped beautify the industrial area with this attractive new and high-quality design project. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And just one last thing. Vince has been very modest. The reason why I had him do the presentation, he was the project manager for this. So it was Vince working with all the other agency, working with the architect. That's why we had this award-winning building. So thank you, Vince.
Thanks, Wayne.
All right. The final report is from our Interim Director of Public Works, Yvette Kirin.
Thank you, Tom. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much. So we are one year in on the approval of the three-year CIP, which this, this council approved in March of two thousand and twenty-two. And my slide tonight, if we can pull it up, now starts the focus on delivering results. So I just wanted to give a brief update on what's going on within our, our different units. For example, through our Municipal Services Group, we're over fifty percent complete on the residential LED Phase Two lighting project. They've been working hard out there. They've, they have about two hundred and seventy lights that have been swapped out to LEDs from the old sodium and approximately a hundred and twenty still to go. So they're working hard. Over in, I'll jump to Utility Services. Jesse and our Water Group continue their effort on, on ensuring regulatory compliance. And of course, now that we have a nice check that came from the councilwoman, we'll want to start to transition our focus also over onto Waterwell Twelve. And then regarding the Engineering Services Group, you know, we're, we're trying to get projects, come to you less with, with projects and more with the delivery of them. So we're, we will come back to you soon. We have an RFP due Friday for the residential alleys design. That was brought up probably two meetings ago when I first started, and we've been able to push out that RFP. We have the Los Nietos Parking Lot Improvements, the start of construction on March twenty-seventh, and we're aligning that with spring break so that we can try and get some of the, the critical activity done while school's not in session and, and reduce the impacts to the parking lot, at least that, that, for that particular week. And then, of course, we have a lot of other CI priorities, CIP priorities in process and design and construction. And of course, you know, we're still working on developing that cost estimate for the Orin Dan Whitley intersection itself. We had to do some layout work, some concept layout work, and, and also determine what kind of fixtures that we liked to cost. But I do plan on bringing back that item to the council the very next meeting. And that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you guys for the quick briefing on what you guys are doing. I do have a question, though. On the USA marks that they're writing on all the poles, are we having somebody come out and pressure wash those? Or could we get USA to maybe put it on the, on the concrete rather than a big USA mark on the poles? Because you're seeing USA everywhere, and it kind of looks like graffiti. And so just hope to get somebody to, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have any tonight?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rounds?
None tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Zamora?
None tonight.
Mayor Protem? And I have none either. Item eighteen, council comment. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, staff, for all those great reports. And I just wanted to thank Lee Squire and all the veterans that serve. Thank you for your service. Also, Mark Gutierrez, Daniel, oh, is it Omara? Okay, I thought it was O'Hara all this time. Thank you so much for everything that you do in the chamber, and, and I see you everywhere. Mark, thank you for selling me my car. It's working, it's running great. And Daniel, again, thank you for your donations to the Women's Club for the coffee. It was a total success, and you're always there for us, and we appreciate you. The, the five K, I wanted to thank our staff for all their great work. It was just an amazing event. I had such a great time running with our council and our, all of our residents. It was so much fun. And so I just want to thank the staff because I know that you did a lot of work and you are appreciated. I wanted to thank our chamber again for the Art Fest luncheon that we gone to, that we had just had this week. It was amazing. It was fun. And thank you to our HAC committee for everything that you do. I had a committee meeting with the Safe Neighborhood Team, and we had the Active Shooter Seminar. It was, we had about six guests because it was It was, we had about six guests because it was raining. But I want to thank Thomas and the and the Aguitas and the Nakamura's and Dolores. Yes, it was a small crowd and and then our our. Our detective that came to to be our sergeant that came to be with us. It was a small group of people, but the video was very informative and we learned a lot about. What to do and what not to do if we have an active shooter somewhere and your safety is everything, so I want to thank you for your attendance. We had our Quarter Mania, the Women's Club. I want to thank our members. I see three of them here today and we did an amazing job. We made about almost a five thousand dollar profit and it goes all back to our community. And these ladies do such a great job and just thank you for your hard work and Madam President, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you to our Congressman Sanchez. It was. It was a little slippery slope there in that grass, but we survived it and in order to get some money, we were there. Thank you so much. We we got a phone call from Senator Bob Archuleta saying that he will be helping us with our Aquatic Center. We've been pushing forward since last year. And I'm sure our Madam Mayor will be talking about that. Congratulations to Paul Martinez, forty years of service. That is awesome. Just. Don't know what to say. He's such a great person and that's a that's something to be proud of. So I just wanted to again thank our staff for everything that you do. You you it doesn't go unnoticed. We notice it every day. You just do an amazing job. And you see everything that's going on with our city. We're moving it forward and we're just so happy to see it growing, so thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Rounds?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank our residents, our honorary residents for being here tonight, braving that. Weather, this crazy weather that we've been having for months now and. Always great to see the chamber, their support. The for being here, coming out here and especially to our sponsors. For donating to our different events that we have, you know, if. Just thank you for giving back to the community. I really appreciate it. And Paul Martinez, I've known Paul for many, many, many years. At one point, I. When I was still over in Eileen Street, he was the neighbor across the street. So I know that social media, a lot of people thought that he retired after forty years. Well. They just honored him for being here for forty years. He's still going strong. He has no intent to retire anytime soon and that's good for the city. Travis, thank you. Thank you for making the numbers all work and look good and show that, you know, financially that Santa Fe Springs is very. Stable and that and that what you do and the audit that looks at it and gives us a good report. It doesn't get any better than that, so I want to thank you for that. You and your staff for everybody does that. And yes, and the five K, I want to just all the staff that was involved in it from setting it up to tearing it down. By noon that day, you would have never thought that a five K run went through our city. It was all cleaned up. I drove away and I said, wow, was I dreaming that? I mean, I got up so darn early that morning, but it was all cleaned up, so good job there. And yes, Nana and Papa are very proud of Paisley Waisley. She she has a gift of running. She's has endurance and. It's the first five K she's ever ran in. She's in a running club. It's first five K she's ever ran in and she did it in twenty-four minutes. So I know it took Eddie and I over close to an hour to walk it. So yeah, she was already home, but no, we're very proud of her. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Zamora?
Oh, Bill and that said, all right. So let's see if we can touch on some other things. Jay and I were actually talking amongst each other and, you know, we were looking at our budget and. Remember when we started, it was about fifty million. We're getting close to sixty-eight now, seventy-two. And it just shows how we're growing. And, you know, it's a reflection on what's happening in our city. And, you know, so we just, you know, it's it's incredible to see that, you know. Of course, you know, process of getting brand new chairs took sixty years. I mean, Jay was bringing that up, but hey. Other than that, I mean, it's all our sponsors, to everything that you guys do. Here are our community members, our volunteers who put the hard effort in. I mean, it it doesn't happen without you guys. I know we sit up here and it's a blessing to sit up here. But honestly, you guys are the true blessing because without you guys, none of this is possible. Of course, Lee Squire, you know. Talking to you, I know we had a personal talk, you know, the other day and I this past week, I didn't get to go to the Shamrock. I was in D C. And, you know, I made it a point to go visit the Veteran Memorial and, you know, thought of your brothers. Brothers and sisters out there, so you know, it's a there's a lot of history and, you know, we we see these eighth grade trips that happen in. You know, Washington, D C. It's it's great to encourage your family members, you know, your little ones to go because you know what? There is so much rich history there. Korean, the Korean War Memorial, you know, where they have the soldiers, you know, they it's just. The the live action, just when you see them, it's just it's an awesome photo. You know, of course, what happened is, you know, is, you know, prices. You know, our freedom is paid with the with the price and that's the price of a soldier. And people don't realize that, you know, some of them come back with P T S D, some of them come back. With medical conditions, amputations, and sometimes they they feel that they're forgotten. And we have to always remind them just by standing up, you know, doing a flag salute, doing a prayer. You know, we always have to stand up, stand up proud for them because honestly, they pay the ultimate sacrifice. So we can't thank them, you know, thank them enough. To our staff, you know, during the rains, you know, police, fire, Public Works. Public Safety, you guys did an amazing job. I know we all got a lot of text messages. And everybody's like, what are you guys going to do with this tree? What are you going to do here? What are you going to do? And it was just, you know, but you guys stepped up. You guys stepped up, cleaned up, did everything that you had to do. My only concern is, you know, we had some about four or five big trees fall. And, you know, we're lucky that no one was hurt. I mean, it could have happened like what happened in the city of Whittier. You know, somebody, you know, tree landed on them during a during a wedding, you know, and. You know, so same company, you know, they have forty-six arborists, but my thing is, what are they doing to check on our trees? I mean, because why are they falling? You know, we have to check the conditions of what's happening there, so. You know, whatever it may be, whatever the conditions are, we just, you know, no one's life. Is, you know, should be put at risk, whether it be because we have the trees in the center medium or wherever may be. You know, we all have to work together, so we have to do our part, so if we can check what's the history, what's the record that they. That they consist of or, you know, even the fact of trimming our trees, sometimes we wonder why they're not trimmed a little shorter and. You know, and I see now that they're going out there and trimming trees a little shorter, so. What's the reason why now they can do it, but they couldn't do it before, so. Other than that, I just want to thank all of you guys came in attendance. Thank you for all that you do here in the city of Santa Fe Springs. Take care and God bless. Have a great night.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, thank you. First off, Lee, I want to thank you for your service to giving us the ability to sit up here. And debate, but conduct business for our community and and the freedom that we have. Thank you for your service, sir. You know. The five K was an awesome event. I was looking outside and I was hoping it was pouring rain because I was not going to go outside, but. It ended up wasn't that bad, but I think I want to call the B S flag on Mr. Rounds and Eddie because. They said it took an hour. It took us over an hour. I think the clock was broke, but I'm not going to say it. But Gus, myself and the mayor, we we walked and I don't know where Eddie and Bill went. I think they went to go get a dessert or something, but. Cherry's Donuts, but no, it was it was a great event, you know, from start to finish, like Bill said, the staff. Everybody that participated in this event, if. You would never think because of the rain, you'd think people wouldn't want to come out there. I think they had more fun as kids. Being out there in the rain and it was it was awesome. Paul Martinez, you know, again, congratulations, forty years of service to our community. And that just shows the commitment that our staff has for this, the love for this community and you don't find that in many places. Thank you, guys, for all the things you guys do. Another thing, Senator Bob Archuleta, Janice Hahn, Blanca Pacheco. Linda Sanchez, you know. These last couple of months, we've actually made an effort to really communicate with our Congress and. And let them understand what our needs are for this community and they've responded to that, and I think that's. Compliments to all of us up there. We've all done our part. Where we've said we were going to reach out and talk to them individually and we have. And I think we we're going to start seeing those. Fruits from our labor really shine in the hopefully in the next couple of months by getting more money for our community and. What it really takes because I think we've lost that in the last six years. I don't think we've talked to them as much as we are now today, so thank you, guys, up here for what you guys are doing and. That's it. I just want to say have a good weekend and try to stay safe and out of the rain.
I'm going to go first next time because by the time I get up, everything's already been talked about. Yeah, no, exactly. Just like what what the council said, it's. All this money that's going to be start coming in, it's because of us. Being out there and vocal and wanting more for our city and we're doing it and so. I like to commend all of our council up here for doing that. It's going out there. Knowing what our priorities are, knowing what our city needs and actually fighting for it and and we're going to be seeing it. In fact, Blanca is coming out in the next couple of weeks also to see what our our priorities are and what she can help with, which is great. And we had that with Archuleta. Janice is going to be coming. Linda is going to be helping another spot and that's great. That. Shows you how much pride we have in our city and our staff. We're getting all those reports, all the grants that they need. In less than twenty-four hours sometimes. Thank you for that, the staff. I just saw somebody about right before we finished, Paul Martinez ran out, so too bad we couldn't stop him and tell him congratulations. Yes, Mycella, we finished the race. We did not cheat. We walked completely in the rain. And we have, yeah, we did it. Potholes and all, we did it, though. Public Works, Kevin. Public Works has been doing an awesome job with the potholes with the trees. Thank you so much out in the rain. Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for everyone coming out here, making these meetings positive. And let's continue with that and on just so you know, one of our resident is going to be got honored as a Woman of the Year. On Saturday, Monique Braz from the Foundation of the Abigail Brazef Foundation, who's also doing the Santa Fe Springs Pageant. She's actually been honored as a Woman of the Year for the Assembly. So it's great to see people from our city get these awards. It just shows how much pride we have in our city. So thank you again. Please stay safe and warm and stay out of the rain. Meeting is adjourned.